To call the. Thank you. September 12th, 2022, meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Ashford. Again, it's 7:03 and we'll start with our agenda and the seating of alternates. As I'm still looking for anyone joining here, I see that we have Luther and Doug here. So Luther, I'd like to seat for, sit for Jeff. Schellinger and we'll see Doug for Jerry DeFray. Okay. And moving on to the approval of what was our last meeting because the August meeting was canceled due to a conflict. The July 11th, 2022 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve, but I have. I have a couple corrections.
We'll go, we'll go to discussion. Does there a second?
My second, Alex.
Okay, so have some discussion. Go ahead Janet, will you have some changes?
Yeah, on, on the second page, the third paragraph that begins, Ms. Bellamy. Noted that Sustainable Connecticut would like a timeline for this information and if the report could. And I think we want to put in there could be ready by October.
Be ready. Okay. Thank you.
And. Later on that page under new business, the second paragraph. This, the last sentence, the Soul Smart recommendations were reviewed by the Clean Energy Task Force. And then if you, including Ms. Bellamy, Mr. Seville, as well as Susan Eastwood, Tony Pacheco and John Biano. You put a period there and then say input from Energize Connecticut, et cetera.
Input was also gained type of thing?
You're muted Janet.
Thank you. Sorry. It looks like those groups participated with us, but they didn't. We used their information.
Oh, okay. Okay. So again, even more so, input was also gained from those sources?
From Energize Connecticut. Yep. Mass Department of Energy.
Okay.
Yep, et cetera. Yep.
Any others?
Not by me.
Okay, again, in discussion, anyone else with changes or corrections? So Janet, could I get you to amend your. Motion that with these changes, you find them acceptable?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that with the changes, we accept the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alex, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the minutes with the proposed changes? Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? I think all people were here last time. Okay. All right. So moved. Thank you very much. We are open to public comment at this point. Again, if it has to do with anything further down on the agenda. We can, you know. But we're open to hearing comments about anything on the agenda pertaining to tonight's meeting. Hearing none, seeing no hands up. We'll move on to bills. We did receive a bill for the initial. Public hearing notice put into the Chronicle of 29868. So that was taken care of, correct Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to correspondence. I did print that up here. We did have an email that came into us.
We have it this morning.
Yep, thank you. Got it here. Email coming into us from Brian Griffiths on Westford Hill Road. Stating to us that on Sunday, September 11th, 2022, an excavator was operating at 154 Westford Hill Road. From 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Is my understanding from the stipulated judgment that. Mr. Love is not, does not have permission to excavate on Sundays. That was Sunday on Saturday night, an exclusively loud amplified outdoor music concert was being held at Briar Lee from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Past 10:00 PM. I know the town has no regulations regarding this. You do have regulations regarding, so act on that. Brian. So any other correspondence besides that?
I don't have any. I don't have any.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on from correspondence, we will go into the public hearing. And the announcement for the public hearing again was posted in the Chronicle. We had to cancel, so we treated it as a continuation. We reposted that. In the citizen because time allowed us to put it into the citizen. I'll read the notice, public hearing, legal notice, town of Ashford. The Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM to consider the following. One, a text amendment application pertaining to the regulation of cannabis establishments. And two, a text amendment application pertaining to townwide prohibition of cannabis establishments. At this meeting, public comments will be heard and written communication will be received related to these applications. Details on how to attend and such were available through the town clerk's office as well as the website. So. In opening the public hearing, just a few preliminary comments. I don't know if we have a lot of attendees tonight for that. Again, the public hearing is an opportunity to share opinions on the two avenues that are being described. We're asking that comments be limited to five initial minutes. And if someone needs to further address or needs to come back to make other points, that is a limited to three additional minutes. Discussion is on either the allowing of establishments with a special permit. Or the prohibition of those activities as outlined. It's not a discussion on moral or ethical or legal status. More similar to the acceptance or prohibition of alcohol sales in a town. It's not a back and forth with the commission. We ask that you address your comments to the chair. And again, it's not a back and forth at this point. We do have time where the commission will discuss. Any of the input received during the public hearing in our regular meeting. So in opening up the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to. Address the commission? Okay. Now I see why we canceled the hearing last month. Um. Hearing no discussion there. I'll open it up to the commission members for any discussion regarding in the public hearings that they wish to make a comment. Yes, Janet?
At our last meeting, I thought that the commission. Had indicated that we wanted to continue with the prohibition. Of any. Retail establishments in town. And I, I would. I, I would support that position. We don't have. Any plea or any way to. Enforce any problem. So I'd like to know what other commissioners feel.
Okay, what to do with the minutes?
This is Dick Williams. I think we went back and forth on this. I didn't recall that we came to a unanimous position. I would advocate that we regulate, not prohibit. And require a special permit about the only place where it would. Logistically be feasible would be at exit 72. And I don't mean the big parcel of land there. There are plenty of smaller parcels there. And if you go up and down 84, you see signs for cannabis dispensaries. Right over the line in Massachusetts. So if the town could make a few bucks. And have it not be in the town physical, but simply off the interstate. I don't see where that would be a detriment to the community. And it would be by special permit, so it would be controlled. I was up in Stirbridge this past week. And observed the one that's right on Main Street. And it looks like any storefront that you would see in any strip mall, anywhere, anywhere, you know. You know, in the town or whatever. It's, it's not a flashing lights or anything that's looks like a. Something that would be a detrimental to what goes on and down.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Janet, I did not see, I looked back through the minutes. I did not see us making a motion of any type to continue the prohibition.
No, I didn't. I didn't. Excuse me. I didn't mean to say that we moved on it. I just said it was my impression. That discussion and I could certainly be wrong. Sorry if I made that impression.
No, no, that's, that's okay. I was just looking through here and I was looking to see, you know, what type of statements were being made. So. So to that end, if, oh, sorry Luther, go right ahead.
I was just going to ask, you know, being that we're in public hearing, is this, you know, are we supposed to really wait to. Engage with, with positioning until we. Move back to our, out of our public hearing? Is this just where we're supposed to present? Information and, and facts and hear from the public? Or are we okay to go ahead and start?
I, we need, we would need to move out of the public hearing into the regular meeting for our full discussion. I was just wondering, anything that the commission members wanted to put out there? With. Mr. Corpio is our public here with any statements or anything that they wanted to do.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank, but thank you on that. Okay, so to that end, seeing no other hands and input, I'm sorry.
Okay, to that point of what Luther just said, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, we are, we will close the public hearing. We don't need a motion to close that. So. Moving on and just bringing us into, say, so we've closed the public hearing at 7:15. And we're moving on to the discussion. Now we can get into more of the discussion that we spoke of just officially. So. Sorry if that's a little convoluted when it comes to protocol and process, but. So did everyone have an opportunity to review Mike's memo regarding?
Jeff, excuse me, Jeff.
Yes.
The order is unfinished business and it's updated 154 Westford Hill Road first.
I, the one that I was sent out and I printed up has. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. We moved it over. That's right. But. So can I get a motion to move up on discussion on the. Cannabis hearing results? Ahead of the update on 154 Westford Hill? Ken can join us at 8 o'clock.
I move that we update. I move the 154 Westford Hill is moved up.
No, actually, actually it's the opposite. We're moving, we're moving up the discussion on cannabis.
Okay, so, so that's what I'm saying. We were supposed to go to 154. So you want to move up from the cannabis to now?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I move that we update the discussion on cannabis ahead of 154 Westford Hill Road.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but my agenda has the cannabis as number S A on it.
As does, as does mine.
So does mine.
The difference is what's on the town website is what Jeff is going by.
Oh, all right.
Word is. Is different.
Okay, so we'll go by with what's on the website and bring that up. Thank you. All those in favor of moving up the cannabis discussion?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay. All right. Now we are into discussion. So I will mention again, did anyone and everyone have the opportunity to review? The memo. The memorandum that Mike had put together regarding the two types of amendment, text amendment changes. For our regulations, one being prohibited use and two being. Regulated use.
Yeah, this is Luther. I, I got a, I read through them. I thought that they were well, well prepared, well written. And I think that either, you know, whichever way the commission decides to go with the language that's. Put together here would, would certainly meet our needs.
I'm sorry I'm late.
Hello Nord.
I just got here. Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
If I may, the one question I, I had on, if that's.
Just, just, just one second Luther. Luther, just one second. I just want to seat Nord. And I'll unseat Doug. Actually, I don't need to unseat Doug because that still gives us nine members. So Nord is seated at this time. Go ahead Luther.
Yeah, it's okay. I just wanted to clarify and make sure I'm reading this the right way that. On page. Two. For the proposed special permit language under section B definition of terms. The way I read that will believe the way it was intended to be written is that. This confines these definitions to only be applicable to this particular proposed new section. Is that correct, Mike?
Correct, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was. That was correct. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for putting this together. This is really nice.
Sure, boys.
Okay. And again, I hope everyone has taken the opportunity to review this. Obviously, there's much more to the. See cannabis establishment is allowed by special permit use and as Mike has identified it. Under each of the. Three allowable zones, the general commercial, the interstate. And the technology development all requiring special permit from the retailer cultivator. Micro cultivator, food and beverage, product manufacturer, packaging and producer. Also in here, it does include that meeting the following criteria, a retail establishment shall not be located within 1,000 feet. Of any other cannabis establishment as defined herein. Within 500 feet of a child daycare facility, a park, playground, school or church. Measured using a direct line. Hours of operation are limited to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. No consumption of any cannabis product may take place on site. And signage will be recorded in accordance with section 329 of the current regulations. Any application for cannabis retailer shall include. At a minimum hours of operation, security access. Description of installed signage, odor monitoring and mitigation and parking and circulation and traffic. Many of the same types of things we require most special permits. Cultivation and production establishments, all activity shall be conducted within a permanent building. A building or portion thereof containing a cultivation and or production use shall not be located within 750 feet. Of a residential structure or within 1,000 feet of any other cannabis establishment as defined herein. Limited retail may be allowed in accordance with state licensing, provided the request is made at the time of the application to the town. Or following initial approval and new permit and new special permit is sought. And again, very similar, any application would include hours of operation, in this case, number of employees, security access. Water demands, order and monitoring mitigation to demonstrate that orders and fumes will be substantially removed from the air prior to be, prior to being vented from the building. So. Again, those of you who either didn't have the opportunity to review, that's just kind of the highlights. I know Dick has mentioned his support of retail. Or excuse me, regulated use in the town. Giving people an opportunity. Janet, you had a. Were you looking for prohibition or were you just dealing with the temporary prohibition until a decision was made?
Oh, I, I think, I think we should prohibit. Cannabis. I don't, I don't see how we're going to enforce the regulations. So I mean, you, you say that. You know, the odor control, but so what do we do when neighbors complain that there's. You know, bad odors coming out. How do we enforce that? Is there?
So can I just?
I'm just, I just want to say it sounds like it's noise. Like, how do you enforce noise? So maybe you can let us know, Michael.
I just, I just wanted to, because this is a tricky thing. The state has thrown this on towns and then. I think as we talked about in May, the, the one for 25,000 restriction was removed. So there is no cap. So towns can allow and have as many as they want. I think the first thing to do. Is, or what's easiest is to separate it out. There are really two categories, the retail and there's cultivation. So the retail sales is really where people talk about things like traffic. And they talk about things like uses in the same area or within the same plaza, for example. And then cultivation is where you don't really see traffic. You don't really see any interaction with the public, but. People are concerned that the operation is secure, that it's got odor eliminators, et cetera. So. Chunking them up and having a discussion about how we feel about retail and then talking about cultivation might make it easier because. As you'll see from the reg that I wrote. There are different criteria for how we cite and sort of review each. So. Just a suggestion, but sometimes it's easier to take them that way.
Yeah, Lucy, you're the farmer that's here. Are you familiar at all with the cultivation of cannabis?
Well, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert on growing cannabis, but what I will say, and so if this is a good point to have a discussion on, on growing, then, you know, so let's look at all of the factors of growing. I like Mike's recommendation that we. Take sort of a holistic approach that way. And, and from my perspective and also talking to Janet's concerns about how we enforce regulations, I think that's actually a really. Insightful. Line of thought. I think that's sort of the, the challenge with all of our zoning regulations is. Some enforcement things can be interesting, but I think that because the special permit, it allows us to. Put conditions on. Systems. So I'll say this from a, from a production standpoint, because the regulations require indoor cultivation. You're, you're growing a crop in a controlled environment. So it allows you to control. Inputs and outputs. So what that means is that. Any airflow leaving that facility can be regulated and any airflow leaving that facility. Can be compelled to be run through odor scrubbers and charcoal filters. And various pieces of technology that at this point in time have several years of durable proven, proven concept. And proven application in other facilities. So it wouldn't be as though we wouldn't be able to have robust regulatory compliance. By being able to say. You must install systems equal to or greater than these in their performance and in their odor removing capacity. So we would be able to. Be able to have, I think, robust control over odor. In terms of the application of technology, the requirement of application of technology. So yeah, from an odor standpoint, Dick, I, hopefully that kind of answers that question that there, there are plenty of technologies that can be. Applied and we can compel the people to comply them, to apply them rather.
Hey, I don't understand. Why don't you just grow it up in a field?
It's illegal. You can't.
When the cannabis laws were enacted, the statute that defines agriculture was specifically amended so that. They could not. Grow cannabis outside or, or, or claim that the growing of cannabis was agriculture. So it's, it's sort of a qualifier that was included in the statute.
It, it's actually more closely regulated along the lines of pharmaceutical products than it is of agricultural products. Which is very different from hemp or, 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 you know. Any other crop that we grow.
I see. You know, in that context. We're limiting that this could only be applicable to. The industrial zone, the. Whatever we call the zone that includes the old wagon shed properties and commercial. I couldn't imagine in what we have general commercial zoning, there, there be any. Place where you would try to grow. Because those plots simply aren't large enough. So the only place that you might grow would be up at exit 72 or at the old wagon shed properties. As far as a retail location. I find it hard to believe that people would drive all the way into the center of, of Ashford and. Go to the strip mall that includes Open Wellness and, and Two Birds and the, the walk-in facility to. To put a retail operation there. It would make more sense to put it out by the highway, but it exits 72. My two cents was before was it would be better off regulating and limiting the places where it can be done. To the. Ones that I just mentioned. And then since it's a special permit and there are a lot of caveats already in this as far as location to schools, churches. Residential properties, et cetera. There's plenty of ways to limit what could, could not be done. For instance, since it's not agriculture. Luther, this wouldn't be an alternate thing for you to grow at your greenhouse, which is in a RA zone. This would have to be up at, at a different, different location. So my recommendation is that we. Go forth with a regulation and special permits. That gives us a lot of flexibility in an area that's going to be changing over time. A strict prohibition. You know, gives us no flexibility.
Mr. Chair, the one concern I have with the special permit is with it, with it being limited to the commercial zones only, that doesn't necessarily preclude the fact that somebody can drive all the way down to the seventy-four, forty-four intersection to a store, because quite frankly, as a consumer, we're all consumers of some capacity and you're going to go to where the store is regardless of where the store is. But I, I don't fully agree with some of the things that you just said, Dick, in that capacity.
Yeah, I, I would be very much in favor of limiting this to the interstate zone and the zone that includes the wagon shed and excluding the commercial zone.
So you are suggesting removing the retail, actually removing everything from the general commercial zoning?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? Luther?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, so I'm of two minds on that. I understand the, so I, I understand, I think I understand the concern about driving traffic. What I would ask everyone to keep in mind, and I, I don't really, I don't have a really strong feeling either way on this, but I think if we're going to be looking at traffic, we need to be looking at traffic realistically. That forty-four, seventy-four corridor, I don't remember what the last traffic counts that were done there are, but they are very substantial. I think that, you know, you're, you're talking thousands and thousands of cars per day already going through there. And if I had to guess, it would be, if, if there was a, certainly if there was a cultivation operation that managed to cite itself, the traffic counts wouldn't be significant, I don't think. If there was a retail operation that cited itself in there, my estimation is that traffic counts from retail operations are going to become more incidental, like they are with package stores that are everywhere, that you just stop at the one that you drive by on your way home. Because this is going to become less and less of a novelty, because more and more towns are going to be adopting the ability to have these retail operations in their, in their towns, and it's going to become less of a destination storefront than it is just going to be the place that someone stops on the way home from their commute. And they're already driving by and we're not actually really adding significantly to traffic loads. That's just my perspective on it. It's entirely plausible that I would be wrong. I'm, you know, in full, in full disclosure, I'm not a consumer of these products, so I don't really have a great basis for that, but I can just, I envision that that's how this will unfold over time. So that's just my two cents on adding further restrictions that, that quite honestly, probably just impede full utilization of our commercial zone. It's, it's pretty, pretty small and under supported as it is.
Well, surprisingly, the commercial areas you're talking about on forty-four and seventy-four are greater than ninety percent populated. So they're pretty much full. My proposal would be to eliminate what we call commercial zones. That would include the stores on forty-four, seventy-four, the stores going up forty-four towards Eastwood. The areas in and around Lake Chaffey where the Cash Country Store is located and I think at one point in time, some of the land across the street from the lake was also proposed to be commercial. I'm not sure if it is any longer. The, it's the plot that's owned by the subpoenas. But if we were to exclude the commercial, that would eliminate there being retail and I, and I don't think there would be enough land to support a, a, a growing operation. So, and that by limiting it to the interstate area for both retail and growing and also to the wagon shed area for retail and growing, that puts, puts it in a, in an area where we can impose special restrictions through the permitting process. And that, that gives us more control of, of things going forward.
If I could just jump in really quick, I was in one, another town that I work in, they have an application for retail, which was, which was put before the PCC and approved. It was approximately, the building size was approximately five thousand square feet. Obviously, not all of that was used for retail. The commission asked for a traffic study as part of that application, which was reviewed, and it was determined that during their most, their highest volume, which was a Saturday, they expected around a hundred and thirty trips per day, which equates to about nine to ten per hour, which was, which was around one percent of the total traffic volume of the, the roadway. So based upon the way that these operations are set up, they basically have counters, you go in and see an individual. They can only really turn around so many people per day because you've got to meet with someone, you've got to make a purchase and you leave, you don't, you don't sort of take it off the shelf, go to some self-checkout like at Stop and Shop and, and walk out the door. So, so, you know, all of these things are things you can obviously ask for. If you allow retail, you can ask them for, for a traffic study, and if they're saying they're going to add forty percent to the traffic volume during peak travel or, or total, you may find that's not appropriate. But that's just a little bit of data that, that I have from, from a town that's in Hartford County, let's say.
Thanks for that, Mike.
And I was just thinking about Luther's comment too regarding whether it's a, once the novelty wears off, you know, it's never really intended to be, but a destination area, it would become, and I love the analogy, again, of a, you know, a package store going in and people go in and try it, and then it just becomes someplace you potentially stop on your way home because you've got a choice of four or five of those travels and such. I would think that if someone's coming in with a retail application, they're looking for the current traffic that's there. They're not going to, and you know, it kind of shows it out at one percent. They're not going to increase the traffic on seventy-four and forty-four with their retail shop coming in like that. I know recently they've talked about maybe some retail or, excuse me, commercial mixed use of the Cattle Rock property that, again, now the towns do own and they're in the process of looking at a mixed use that, and maybe a couple of those lots might be identified for commercial use. Some come in right off of forty-four. I don't think you're going to see someone put something up across from the lake or, you know, any of the other more remote, even though they are state roads locations in here. I, I guess, Dick, one of the things I'm wondering about, do you see a differentiation between retail and then the cultivating and processing of limiting it? I mean, we could always just go by prohibited use in the GC except for retail, if that's what you are leaning towards.
That's. Make a stab that states things clearly. I think it would be a mistake to put a retail facility in one of the strip malls areas on seventy-four and forty-four, that, that would make no sense. It's the same, it would be to put something up where the old Midway is located. That, that would be a mistake too. So by simply striking out the the zoning of commercial, that eliminates all those, those properties. And then including these, the, I can't think of the word that we're using now, but, but basically the property that would be the Cattle Rock facility, that, that is designated a special area. It's not commercial, it's not recreational, it's not residential, it's a special area. Even, even a retail or a growing facility in there is feasible. Going up to exit seventy-two, there are smaller plots of land that are part of that zone, specifically on the access roads, and you could easily peel off, you know, three or four acres or less that could support a retail location. And then there are hundreds of acres that could support a, you know, a, a, area for growing. So, I mean, in, in all those cases, there's, it's sparsely populated. The one, if we're to think about something to put in, would be a retail at exit seventy-two, it, it's right in line of the same ones that, that you see up in, in Sturbridge. I've not set across the street from the one that's on Main Street in Sturbridge, but I've noticed.
There's actually, there's actually two establishments there now. I was just up in Brimfield on Friday, and there are actually two establishments on that Route twenty.
Yeah, but the, the one that's across the street from the package store, Yankee Spirits, I don't think I've seen more than four or five cars in the parking lot.
Okay. Um, any other discussion from anyone on this? Any input? Luther?
Yeah, and sorry if my clock's in the background. I just had a question as to what the, again, I, I might be interested in supporting the position of not allowing retail in commercial zones, but I'm, I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to understand what it is that makes this type of retail not an appropriate or perceived to not be an appropriate use in a commercial zone. You know, we've got these commercial zones identified because they can accommodate the higher traffic counts, they can accommodate the parking requirements, they can accommodate retail establishments. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, with all of that being true, what is it specifically about a retail operation that is selling cannabis products that makes them not be a good fit for commercial zones?
My comment was addressing the concern of having a cannabis retail in what would be, we, we really don't have much of a town center. The seventy-four, forty-four area in West Ashford is the closest to a town center that we have. And to, you know, to put the cannabis retail there might be objectionable to some. There has been extensive studies of the traffic in that area. And if the state ever gets around to acting on all of the studies that have been done, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make that area safe. It's a very high traffic, a high accident, you know, and literally any more development there is just going to make things worse. But if you put something off of the exit seventy-two, it, it's not going to be any, you know, effect on anybody. And if you had something off of forty-four, going between Ashford and Yukon, there's a fair, fairly decent amount of traffic on forty-four. Most of it is the commute going into Yukon. But I, 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 I don't know if Mansfield is thinking of locating any retail locations, but I would think that this would, would probably be a draw for, for the students to say the least.
I know that there are at least one, if not more developers that are actively pursuing the right to locate in Mansfield.
And I, and I, and I, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to limit what we can or cannot do. I know you say that those locations are ninety percent filled, but they also come and go quite a bit in there too. I know the, the tag sale section of the, what was, you know, Mr. Butcher area closed and left that opening. Two Birds Jewelers had left, and I know there's that opening. It'd be, if a commercial or retail group was wanting to come in, obviously ready-built is much better than further development of areas that might close along any of our venues here. So, um, so to that end, I'd like to move, unless there's further discussion from anyone.
I, I, I had Mark Schubel. I had my hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No problem. Well, I mean, I live at the intersection of forty-four and seventy-four off Southworth, so I come out trying to get onto forty-four every single day, and I can attest to that the volume at peak hours is extremely heavy. You know, that being said, you know, the state has decided to legalize cannabis sales and, you know, I agree with Luther that I, I'm looking at it, though I don't necessarily agree with it, but I'm looking at it as I would a package store. As much as I don't want to see increased traffic flow at an intersection I need to go out of, I'm also of the realization that that might not be the intersection they choose. If Midway decides not to reopen, I mean, it has a large paved parking lot. If I was looking for a retail location, that one seems pretty ideal. So I'm not confident that they're going to move into, you know, right at that forty-four, seventy-four, you know, intersection. Though if, if a growing facility, you know, went in across the street from the mobile station, I probably wouldn't be quite as happy, you know, as a resident.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Can, can we go forward with some motions?
Well, I just wanted to check with Mike. Um, Mike, I think what I'd like to do, if you think it's appropriate to, um, but we'll act on B, the PZ two-two-dash-three text amendment application pertaining to the townwide prohibition of cannabis establishments. Can I get a motion for the townwide prohibition of cannabis?
I would move that we do not do a townwide prohibition.
I'll, I'll go with a negative. They like to have them as positive ones, but I'll go with, and, you know, vote it one way, but I'll go with a negative. That's fine. Um, all those in favor, excuse me, I need a second, excuse me, I need a second on that?
Jeff, I'll second that.
Luther seconds that. Okay, so all those in favor of not having a prohibition for cannabis establishments in a text amendment change to the regulations? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Three, four, five. And all those in favor of having a prohibition?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstentions?
Aye.
In order of stains. And that is all. So, um, we will not do a prohibition, and it went six to two with one abstention. Valerie, to capture that?
No, I don't, I don't know who, I know Janet Bellamy and I, I'm looking down to right, and by the time I look up, the yellow line is gone. So I don't.
Okay, I can tell, I, I can tell you that it was Bellamy and Jenny voting, well, voting for a prohibition. And Nord abstained.
Okay, so then I've got the rest of it.
And the rest of where? And the rest of were affirmative, correct?
Okay, so it was Janet and and Mr. Jenny that were. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And Jeff, I I don't think we have the details flushed out to vote on. The regulated use. We've tossed out a lot of different items. I propose that Michael absorb some of all of this. And come back with a revised document that could be voted up or down.
Well, I guess we need to give him some guidance as to where you, I mean, he came across, he came out with a a piece. So I guess I need to know what the commission's guidance is to him to come back with a piece.
Jeff, this is Luther. You know, I for one, I for one don't see a need for revision on the proposed language. You know, I'm I'm certainly willing to pure other pupils' changes and they're probably entirely fine. But from for me personally, I don't, I don't have any, any changes that I'm looking to propose at this point.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
In reflected and on what you just said, Luther, we tossed in then tossed out the commercial areas. I'm okay with leaving it in. I guess the only change that would have to be made to the document is to take out the section on the prohibition.
And and the document was just identifying the two different types of language on this for the two different text amendments in the memo. So, um. I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept the section for it to go.
Jeff, before we go there.
Yes, Doug.
Can someone please refresh my memory on what areas of town are grouped in the technology sector, the TV column?
That is the, it's been, it's given, as Dick mentioned, a number of different names. It is the wagon shed, Cattle Rock. Uh, area that's identified in the plan of conservation and development. Off of forty-four there, part of it's in Wellington, part of it's in Ashford. Obviously, we're talking about the Ashford section.
Yeah, and it it's approximately three hundred and the Ashford portion is three seventy-six acres. A lot of which is wetlands. So it's.
Technology Development Section is just that. I'll say southwest corner of town per se.
Yeah, if you, if you go down forty-four.
I know where it is. I'm just trying to clarify what the sections are. So the IID is the interchange with eighty-four.
The interstate exchange, interchange in eighty-four, correct?
And then the GC is general commercial.
Correct, which is kind of.
Seventy-four forty-four corridor with some specific spots throughout. Am I capturing it correctly?
Yes, yes, the, again, it's kind of, uh, there's kind of spot commercial up eighty-nine and such also. But the the majority is the seventy-four forty-four near the intersection.
Yeah, and Doug, if you go to the land use regulation. There is a a section in that that defines specifically what plots are commercial. And a map also identifies it.
Yep, I'm also looking at the P O C D for the other stuff at the moment. So, um. Do we really want a special permit for this topic in the technology development section? Doesn't seem appropriate to me. If we want to restrict it to just commercial.
I would think you would want a special permit for either the growing or the retail. Since there are so many restrictions placed upon that and things that would have to be studied. It would be.
I guess rather my question is, do we really want it to be a permitted use in that? Zone of our town. I'll re- I'll rephrase my question to what I just said.
In the TD section you're talking about, the technology development?
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at this table on the proposal that Mike put together in the far right column, the TV. I I guess my opinion is the TD should just not be in the table at all and it should only be a special permanent use. In the general commercial or perhaps the interchange.
I I also have a question to that, and if that's okay, is it, is it correct that the town has actually been? Considering. Various non-developmental uses for that parcel. Or or we're trying to decide what to do with that parcel now that the town has ownership of it and is. Maybe this needs to be something for future discussion, but is is the zoning that we have in place for that parcel? Because it's really specific to that property only. Is is that, is that zoning gonna have to be changed? You know, if that goes, gets put into, you know, conserved land use or something like that. Does, you know, to to Doug's point, does, does that lot need further examination as to what it's going to become in the long term? Because it's now in the possession of the town.
Again, you kind of hit that on the head, the fact that now the town owns its section of it. That we have legal rights to it and can do what we feel, you know, needs to be done with it. Um, will the zoning probably need to be tweaked? I would say yes, because they are looking at, as I said, multiple use in there, everything from affordable housing to passive recreation. Um, to potentially, um, uh, what was it, housing, passive recreation? There were a couple of other uses in.
There was a office development for technology.
Yeah, right. A conservation also, a plan of conservation of the land in certain areas and solar for that matter.
It's my understanding that the selectmen will probably ask for professional. And recommendations for what to do with the 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 land. So. I don't think we could approve. It's not ready. The land isn't, it hasn't been remediated and it's not ready to be developed. So.
So that that's an excellent, that's an excellent point, Janet. Yeah, absolutely. That's an excellent point that, so maybe, uh. What would we need to do, Mike, if we were to change the chart from the TV area not being a special permit but just being NA, so to speak?
Yeah, I mean, you could make, you can make changes to the regulation as written that are more restrictive. Without having to go out and re-advertise for the public hearing. So you could, if everything else in the regulation looked good, you could make a motion subject to modifying the table. So that just removing the TD column, essentially, if you don't want any of those things in there. We just get rid of that column altogether.
Okay, so since we've come to that point, um. Can I get a motion to accept the text amendment language for cannabis? Establishments allowed by special permit use with the change to the table. Removing the allowable special permit for the TD area.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Alex.
I'll second.
Dick, Dick seconds it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just for clarification, there is. Money's being appropriated to complete the final remediation and apply for a grant from the. Appropriate state agency. There is very little remediation left to do on the Ashford side. There's a little bit more in the Wellington side. There's also discussions going to hire a firm to develop a marketing plan. The goal is, is to try to find a way that this property goes back on the tax rolls. It, you know, it's, it's, people have said, oh, let's make it one great big park. That sounds good, but but it would be good if we could find a at least part of it that could that could be taxable.
Right, right. And it is working with the two towns, which the, again, they're putting in for the grant. The grant's not a guarantee. But they are, and actually there was discussion tonight for the Selectman's Office based on the hearing. Both Selectman's Office of Wellington and Ashford after the hearing and how to go forward with a. Wide ranged grant request because nothing is specific at this point. It's a plan of a plan, so to speak. Um, okay, so I have a. A motion, I have a second. All those in favor of accepting the cannabis establishment allowed by special permit use. With a modification to the table as contained here in the meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, those opposed?
Aye.
And Janet, and I'm sorry.
Myself as well, Jeff.
And Doug, okay.
I have, I have more, I have more questions about the document and we're moving too fast with motions, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Well, if you had other discussion, I mean. I I had asked.
There's a motion on the floor, so I I do, but there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, and any abstentions? None. Okay, so that passed seven to two. Valerie. All right, so Mike, you'll make those changes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And when will we have those added to the regs and how do we need to, do we need to put that out there anyway?
We'll run a notice of decision. I'll make the final edits. It'll get added to the E code as a new law on the left, new code. And then it'll be codified into the document when we do the regular updates with the ordinances.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, since we've moved that discussion up and the official or moved it down, I should say. So the unfinished business is the update on one fifty-four Westford Hill Road. I asked a motion to go into an executive session. Cancelator has joined us to discuss this. Um, so I'm looking for a motion for executive session.
I moved to go into executive session.
Thank you. Seconded by Janet. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go into executive session. Uh, Mike, you wanna do your magic on the meeting?
Yep, so I'm gonna send you on to a breakout room.
Okay, here we go. We are back in session. First item on the business, PZ two-two dash four, special permit for short-term rental, thirty-four Avidon Drive.
Your audio is very bad, Jeff. I'm not sure if something changed.
Say what?
That was a little better.
Is that any better? Yes, no?
That's bad, I think.
Okay, so again, special permit for short-term rental. This is receipt of an application. Mike, did you wanna take us through this at all?
Yeah, so this application just came in. We have regulations regarding short-term rentals requires a special permit. So this is just for receipt, no discussion or review tonight. I'll schedule the public hearing and work with the applicant to do. A butters and the legal notice, et cetera, et cetera, for the October meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to receive the application?
So moved, Janet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Alex.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved, thank you. Okay, and Mike, we're back in your court again. The Affordable Housing Plan Survey Results and Update.
Okay, so. When we met last in July, we had just closed the survey. But we had received, I think, around a hundred paper responses. So it took some time to just go through all of those, compile the results and then get those entered in. So that we could end up with. Result, you know, results that included both the online survey stuff and the the paper surveys. So I went through, entered all that and then have basically pulled out the results. In totality, and I can, I mean, I can share them with the commission. I can go through them quickly here as well. But basically, now that we have. A sense of how the community as a whole feels about the various topics that were included within the the survey. What we then typically will do is start to pull together sort of a menu. For the commission to review related to various implementation topics. As we work through the results, if it, if it really looks like people. Are perhaps not as informed on affordable housing and what it is and what it can be and how it works. Then a lot of the implementation items will focus on education and public outreach. Whereas if it's overwhelming that everybody knows what it is and they love it and they want more of it, then we really focus on things that are project heavy. Because we don't need to perform that educational component. So. I can, I mean, I can run through some of the highlights quickly if you want and then send an email out for everybody to review. It's obviously a bit extensive because we also pulled out all of the. Individual written narrative comments that survey allowed for people to just write their own freehand comments. So we have all of those tallied. So I can do whatever, whatever you think is best.
Personally, I'd like to see, I'd like to be able to look at it as opposed to just hear what your results are. So if it's something that you can put together and provide to us so that we can review and talk about fully at next meeting.
Yeah. So, yeah, what I can do is I can pull, pull it all together and I'll email it out and just make a note.
Yeah, that's one man's opinion. I mean, I don't know if other commissions have a different opinion on that.
So, and I, let me just hit on two or three, just so you can kind of see where we're headed.
Great, okay.
About fifty-two percent of the responses felt that affordable housing was an important, was very important to Ashford's long-term vitality. So. That, you know, that that's something you don't typically see in every town. It was almost, it was split almost exactly. Between yes, no, and not sure regarding whether or not respondents feel that the housing stock currently in Ashford meets residents' needs. Which I thought was was interesting.
Majority. Are you saying, are you saying a third, a third, a third, so to speak?
Correct.
Okay.
Though it wasn't a landslide, the majority of people don't feel that Ashford's existing housing stock will satisfy future markets. The, a a overwhelming majority, sixty-something percent. Feel are concerned with the overall cost of housing and homeownership in 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 Ashford. And people pretty overwhelmingly feel that housing options for seniors and for young families are the most needed. Um, and we had a number of people draft their own narrative responses to that. Um, and we had a number of people draft their own narrative responses to that. I'm just trying to hit, majority of people obviously live, own and reside in Ashford. And then there was a, a small portion, roughly twelve percent that were renters. I see if there's anything else that really hits the lot of the comments were related to taxes and, and taxes being high and, and a diversity of, of housing stock. So we had, yeah, I mean, I probably have six pages of just comments where people are just sort of writing their own thing. So I'm going to send all this to you. A lot of the comments are, well, not a lot. Some of the comments are total nonsense, but people are, have the right to say whatever it is. So you'll have to just kind of weed through some of that. But I will send this along for the commission to pull together and, or to read rather, and in an effort to keep the ball rolling. Like I said, what I can do is for the next, as the next step, we can look at the data and the demographics. And we can also look at some of those menu options sort of as a whole. And then the commission can start looking at those and see kind of what they feel makes sense. As we start to pick through what from that menu list really should make it into the plan.
Have you been able to include or have you, if your plan to include what I came across the other day at the Selectman's meeting for the, actually the Kettle Rock on use on with the housing authority and the housing development group? Wonder Jessica?
So my thoughts are that we can provide this survey to her. And then when we get that list together of potential items for consideration, we can make, we can either, I can get that to her or if she's available, we can ask her to participate in this, in that meeting with the commission here. I don't know what you feel is more appropriate, but yeah, I figured at this point, now that we've got the data, we can start to loop her in on, on thoughts that she would have regarding implementation and what is viable. You know, there's a lot of stuff here related to housing for seniors, et cetera. So I think she'll probably have a good perspective when we start talking about that.
Well, if she finds it beneficial, then I'm just thinking, uh, yeah, absolutely. Sharon, you know, share everything we can with her. Um, I just want to be sure that we're capturing their efforts as a town in our plan of affordable housing, that whatever their efforts are, or even what their planned efforts are, we can capture that and add it into our overall plan.
Yep. So I'll, I'll provide this to her and, and then kind of keep the dialogue open and see how she is most comfortable with sort of being engaged.
Great.
And I have a question, Mike. Do you have a sense that we need to do a lot of education?
I think that the, which isn't, it's not unexpected to me, but I think that, that the majority of people sort of think that things are more or less fine. You know, I don't think that there's a lot of people that feel there's this, you know, this, we need to rally the troops to get this taken care of. You know, I think a lot of people are concerned with the preservation of what they consider Ashford to be, right? Whether it be rural, whether it be developed in the current development pattern, single family detached with large lot zoning, whatever their impressions are, they, they don't want that to change. And so the key is really educating them on, you know, the affordable housing, we already have it, right? I mean, it's right across from Town Hall. It exists and it, and it, and it's not disrupting anything. But there are ways to allow for this to occur to really assist the residents that need it without disrupting what we think is sort of Ashford. Nothing overly polarizing. Sometimes you see, but I haven't gone through all the the individual responses as far as what people think when they're able to write freehand.
Well, and, and when we were talking to people, people are confused about low income, you know, subsidy or low income housing and affordable housing. And I think there were a couple of comments about, oh, you'll bring crime into Ashford. So I thought that people need to understand what affordable housing means.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I've got some statistics and some data that we can show with that, you know, overwhelmingly affordable housing across the board. More often than not, if you're talking about the occupants, very frequently, when you're not looking at age restriction, what you're looking at is single mothers with children. Across the board, those are the, they are the most frequent users of affordable housing units. So you, you, you can very clearly show a, a data connection between those units and single mothers with children overwhelmingly, if, if there are separated parents, kids live with the mother. And when we look at the divorce rate in the United States, you've got kids that are having to live in one of those households overwhelmingly, they go, they go with the mother. And so you typically see single mothers with children as the, the biggest users, if you will, of these things. And, and there are some places that basically say, if you're against affordable housing, you're against single mothers trying to raise their children. It's not section eight, it's not federal housing. That, that's sort of what a lot of people think. But there's a, there's some really good data that we can pull together if we want to have like a listening session or something along those lines. To try to educate people on who these users are, but we're talking about affordable housing, which is thirty percent of eighty percent of Ashford's area median income, not someone who makes, you know, something like five percent and, and gets a voucher from the federal government for a hundred percent of their rent to be covered. That, that's not what we're talking about in this, you know, solely within this discussion.
Excuse me. Could I ask a question?
Of course. I'll go ahead, Valerie.
Could you please give me the name of the person at housing that you're going to be communicating with because it was said so fast?
All right. Yeah. Let me, uh, I don't know our last.
Hey, no, I'm trying to think of it too. It's Jessica.
Miller, Miller, Jessica Miller.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, thank you. Anything else on the update?
Nope. So I'll send this out to everybody in the morning.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. To be up all night reading those narratives. Um, okay. Um, and just to get to zoning report quickly, I added in an item here. I just wanted the commission to, uh, items for future discussion, things that we've brought up in meetings and things we need to follow through on. Um, one of those obviously being alternate, uh, should be alternative. I'm sorry. I have alternate energy regulations with the solar and wind. We need to follow through on the work that the Clean Energy Task Force uh, and working with Soul Smart as well as the previous drafted regs that were put together back in two thousand and fourteen and kind of merging those. As we said, we were going to do. So that's something we need to look at. The other thing that came up was we had a session with a Freedom of Information person. I can't remember where they were from. I didn't attend the meeting, but I was, I'm sorry.
Tom Henick, he was from FOI.
FOI. Thank you. Um, and I believe in his statement there, what was captured was that special, um, not special. Subcommittee's are not necessarily the way to go with the commission because you deal with things like inappropriate minutes or minutes not being captured for action and things like that. So this is stuff the commission needs to work on as opposed to a few select members, uh, putting their nose to the grindstone, so to speak. So these are things we need to follow through on. So again, solar, wind, et cetera, for alternative energy. The discussion regarding agriculture and zoning regulations, how they coexist, working with the Connecticut Farm Bureau. I think we were going to invite Nicole, was that her name? Mike?
Joan.
Joan, I'm sorry, Joan. Um, and, uh, you know, get some feedback on that along with reviewing. I know Mark has, I've looked at it slightly. The, uh, document from the state of Connecticut regarding agriculture and zoning. So we need to follow through on that. So, uh, you'll see that coming up on our agendas also. Uh, and of course, the all encompassing plan of conservation development, which will be due for Ashford in two thousand and twenty-five. Sounds like a long time away, but we're a couple of months away from twenty-three. And we just, we should be updating this. I know it's been an effort on our part early on. It's been an effort for the, uh, our town, our future. And it's something that we really need to, uh, update on a regular basis as opposed to just, uh, all hands on deck come, uh, you know, whatever, uh, November of two thousand and twenty-five, in order to make sure we make uh, updates and changes. So it is something that again, will be on our agendas going forward. To do it, maybe piecemeal, work on a section at a time, similar to the regs. Luckily they're not large sections. And there are a number of objectives and, uh, we can get information from people ahead of time who should have been working on some of those objectives and find out what the status is, if they've been moving on any of those. Again, to get it updated, it's a, it's a living, breathing plan. It's not a one and done and let it sit there for 10 years.
Because of a scheduling snafu with Labor Day weekend, uh, the town, our future is meeting the same time that we are tonight. Mike Gantik has been in conversations with Bill Faletti about organizing a leadership roundtable, which was the way we had kicked off the, uh, update to the plan of conservation and development of five years ago.
Right.
And, uh, that would invite, uh, all of the commissions, uh, all of the town employees, the churches, the, anyone from the business associations. We, we just about filled Knowlton Hall with a whole bunch of, of, of breakout sessions that identified any number of things to do in this area. I don't know what the timeframe for that, but, uh, it's, it was trying to do it sooner rather than later. But there's a lot of conflicts with, uh, doing this as a in-person meeting. Uh, it would be in Knowlton Hall. And it would probably be some sort of a hybrid meeting since some people don't want to get together in person still. But, but there is activities going there and Jeff, I would encourage you to, uh, reach out to Mike Gantik because he's taking the lead on it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dick, for that. Okay. Very good. Um, to that, we'll go to zoning officer report. Oh, I'm sorry, Luther, you had something. I just, I didn't look at your hand.
Um, just briefly, yeah, just in terms of touching on the P O C D. Yeah, I think it's important that we maybe look at other options too, other than just being reliant on other committees in the town. You know, if there's ways that we can send out additional surveys like we are, you know, doing with the affordable housing, uh, plan development and things of that nature. I, I think it's an important process for planning and zoning to own the P O C D update and, and not have it be completely out of our purview.
Oh, I, I, I fully agree with you on that. And again, it does fall under our auspices and, um, the, it's great to do similar to what we did. And I was active with Mike when it came to going through the update on the P O C D and, you know, talking to people about what the changes were. But we also identified the different areas in town that were responsible for those objectives and any things that we wanted to get done. So yeah, I agree. Um, you know, this group going out, reaching out to get some preliminary information as to, you know, what of these objectives that were in your wheelhouse, what do you feel you've made any progress on and bringing that home? So thank you.
Yeah, it looks, or you know, the, for instance, there is a, a section on agriculture. We reached down at the time to the Agricultural Commission for their input for that section. There was also a section on sustainable energy, uh, reached out to.
I, I, I understand the premise of reaching out to the, the expert groups to, to get their feedback. I just was more speaking to the tone of, you know, sort of being in, making sure that we're, we're doing that and making sure that we're retaining sort of control over the dialogue of how we pull this together and, and how we, we start down that road. Because I think to Jeff's point, yeah, this might be something that goes on agendas virtually every month moving forward until we get through this process. Cause I remember the last time I was involved in one of these, it took quite a long time.
If, if it comes down to the point, like all of these items, and I'm not sure how you're going to comply without with a, that comment about the FOI not having small subgroups working together to do things. You, you can't meet as full commission and write a document. It just doesn't work that way. You, you've got to have someone go off, do something, bring it to a smaller group, discuss it, make changes, and then just iterate that. And then finally bring it to the full commission. So there was a group, I headed the last one of, for the current P O C D. And it was, uh, I think Jeff was active at times with that. Bill Darcy was very active in, in, in generating, uh, uh, content. We did have a young fellow from, uh, NCOG that turned a lot of the, uh, logistic ranks on that. Cause it was a lot of mapping that had to be updated to, to generate this. So, you know, you, you, you're going to need a, a P O C D committee. Uh, and it's, it's not going to be the entire, you know, uh, planning and zoning commission.
But what I'm thinking is, uh, and I, I, I understand your point there, Dick. I'm, what I'm thinking about is a a task force from other committees. Again, if Bill Faletti is involved, the first selectman's office is involved on this. Then, uh, you know, I'm not saying we get our marching orders there, but I would like to work in conjunction with on the different leads of the committees. Uh, but again, the, uh, the be all and end all, this falls under the Planning and Zoning Commission and moving forward on it. Yes, Janet?
Mr. Chair, um, I would just like to, um, uh, agree with Luther had at some points at a survey, I think at some point it would be a good idea to put together some kind of survey for the, see what the town, what's important to the town. And I know that our town, our future has had meetings that are very well attended, but that doesn't necessarily reach out to everyone in town. Something about the future.
All right. And last thing, uh, is the zoning officers report. Mike, bring us on.
Um, a couple of violations that have been sort of, I've been working on, uh, one of which was in conjunction with the health department with some property that was spanning two towns related to some glamping or hip camping, if you will. We've got, um, working with, uh, the new, uh, wetland agent, sort of get him into the fold and, and getting things set up there to make sure that we don't drop ball on anything new that comes in. And working with the first selectman's office to get the town further down the road and being prepared for hybrid meetings. Um, and working with the town's IT consultant to identify basically what we need and what type of technology is required for the different rooms that we've got. So we, at the town, Jeff was at, I don't think anybody else was, um, maybe others was at the first sort of hybrid that happened about a month ago. So, um, trying to work in that direction so that as, as we've got the technology in place, so people can start meeting in a hybrid way, in a manner that's complying with the new changes to the statute.
And you saw Sherry's email today about the, um, short-term rental candidate?
Yeah, I, um.
Who said, who sent us something like what eight PM on Thursday night and wanted an answer today?
Yeah, I got, got the same email in Wellington and, uh, one other place. And then the same follow-up, you know, yeah, Saturday night. So I did respond and sent the, a copy of the regulations.
Perfect.
So we're good.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, just as a comment, Mike, I understand that there's a, a group in Wellington. Yeah, just as a comment, Mike, I understand that there's a, a group in Willington that's organizing to try to lynch you.
Yes, there are a number of people that in, have decided that I am working for a development company in Willington while also working for the town and though completely unsubstantiated, they seem to, you know, everybody likes a good conspiracy, right? It's something that, any government-related conspiracy is something that lots of people can get behind very quickly. And so it's been a lot of late meetings and a lot of, a lot of additional frustration, shall we say.
I was gonna say, it was very late on, it was very late on a couple of those and you held, showed great restrain or you were very tired.
I think it's a small-town thing, people love to grab on to any little tasty nugget of conspiracy.
Keep some warm at night. All right, thank you very much. Um, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Dick Williams' motion, Janet seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you all for your attention and get ready to work hard these next couple of months.
Thank you.